Meeting for her job. So can everyone hear me okay? Okay, all right, so I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the New Mexico City Council on Monday, January 25th, 2021 at 6:30 PM and we'll have a roll call.
Jeff Parnett.
Here.
Okay, gotcha Darla Weber.
Yes.
Julie Good.
Here.
Darby Edwards. Unmute.
You have to hear your voice.
There we go. I thought I joined with audio, I apologize. Yes, I'm here.
Perfect.
All right, so I'll lead you in the pledge of allegiance if you would like to join. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. So I hope everyone had an opportunity to look at my mayor's report. We are, I believe Mac was able to get the Star News to put in a listing for the job opening here at the city for an assistant to Jesse. And I just want to say a big thank you to Darby for chairing the joint meeting of the Parks and Rec and Citizen Advisory Committee. Appreciate your help on that Darby. And we'll be looking at that in just a few minutes. Angie has done a great job of creating all these different brochures and publications and she did create a master list. And we're going to be making sure that all of those get on the website. So you have a place that if someone asks you information about something, you know where you can send them to get that information, whether it be snow removal or billing policy or RV use, all of those. And she's taken a lot of time to put those together and I know all of them that we've seen, we've been really impressed with. Did ask her to put together a special door hanger for those who are in the right of way when snow removal happens because we've had quite a difficult time with that. And that this way, right after snow removal is done, the next day we can just go around and say, hey, you need to move your vehicle, it was out in the right of way and this will be your warning. And then if they don't take care of it the next time around, we can go ahead and have the Sheriff's Department issue a citation. So anyway, I appreciate all of her help on that, so. And then Jesse, Mac and I did meet with Warren Drake, the backup operator. And he is going to be checking in monthly with Jesse and just going through to make sure he knows our system. He's the one that's going to take over if there's an emergency and we need a backup operator. And I think it's a good idea for him to know what's going on in our system in the meantime and not have to come up to speed. We did reach out to him and ask him about some of the things that have been going on down at the sewer plant and you know, just another mind and voice in the mix is sometimes good. Somebody from outside who maybe sees things that we can do a little better. So I have to say that I'm extremely impressed with the way that Jesse has been carrying out her job and I hope that you all will extend your encouragement to her. I did see, receive quite a few phone calls that last go around with the snow removal and we have another big storm coming up. So she did an amazing job at a very, very difficult time. So anyway, we have Chris Curtin here who's going to talk to us in just a little bit about regional broadband and the possibility of bringing that into our community. We have kind of an update on what's going on with the local COVID and we have Mountain Water Works here. So we have quite a bit on the agenda and I would like to just move through it as much as possible. Does anyone have any questions for me regarding my mayor's report? So I hope you all had a chance to look at the joint Citizen Advisory and Parks Rec meeting. Looks like they're making progress. Darby, is there a way to get the mission statement and what you have put together so far so the city council can just kind of review and see what we have on the table at this point?
We could do that. So ask specifically what it is that you're looking for. I mean, you know, this, because it's two committees coming together, there's like a different train of thought and I think we're having very good conversations. And I think we're making progress. But because we're still kind of getting to know each other and figure out what it is that we want to do, I mean, I understand it's taking a little more time than you would like, but I mean, that's kind of how it works when you're meshing together two groups. So what is it specifically that you're asking for?
And first of all, I'd like to say it's not because I think it's taking too long. I just was wondering if you had a mission statement that the city council might be able to review that kind of gives us an overview of what direction the group as a whole is headed in, some of the things you're going to be talking about for the purpose of if city council has any things that they actually become aware of that they could send on over to you. I did have a conversation with someone who's interested in the possibility of having a small dog area and I gave her information on the Citizen Advisory Committee Parks and Rec joint meeting. So I'm just wondering if you guys have kind of lined out a little bit of a this is where we're headed and kind of what we're looking at. If you haven't, that's fine. I just thought when you get to that point, it'd be kind of nice so we can stay in the loop and help you.
Okay, and I appreciate that, I truly do. Are you, are your thoughts to keep these two entities together? I mean, do we need to combine and make it, you know, kind of title it the Parks and Rec slash Citizen Advisory Committee?
I don't.
I don't know because there are two different entities. So if we come up with a mission statement, you know, I don't know who that, I mean, because mostly what we do is we talk Parks and Rec stuff. That's truly what.
Aren't you working on the Park Master Plan?
Yes ma'am, we're working.
That's what I'm asking for this statement, the mission statement on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Angie, can you make a note of that and?
We'll make that presentation at your next, at your next meeting that shows.
Okay.
There, right?
Perfect. Thank you so much Darby. Does anybody have any questions on that committee or those minutes for Darby? Okay. All right, so we have Ed here from Mountain Water Works. And you should have received the written report and I think it was, it was kind of talking about what was going to be happening last week. So maybe Ed, you can bring us up to speed as of this week where we are.
Sure, we are actually test pumping that well right now. Started on that this morning and it didn't, didn't exactly go the way we thought it was going to go. They had some issues, mechanical issues with the generator that they got from Western States, but it kind of got straightened out. So about three o'clock this afternoon, we started doing a test pump and I guess initially the plan was to start kind of low on that, you know, 200 gallons a minute, 400 gallons a minute, and then 600 gallons a minute and then potentially go up to 750. You know, the way that it ended up working out, typically you would start that with the valve open and then the pump will just do whatever it's going to do at that point. Then you back it off using a control valve. So the pump they have down there is capable of doing about 1500 gallons a minute. So we had some issues with the generator starting and stopping, but it was apparent through that that we could pump that well at 1500 gallons a minute pretty easily, which was, you know, extremely good news and, you know, well in excess of what we were, you know, the best case scenario we were hoping to get. So the, the issue was kind of the, the generator wasn't winterized, it sounds like, from Western states. They had the wrong type of diesel in it and there's some issues with the fuel filter. So it, they finally got comfortable having it run at about 1250 gallons a minute. It's been running there since three o'clock this afternoon. We've got a transducer down the well taking water level data. So the, the plan, you know, Bill Burke is up there keeping an eye on the, on the discharge, the, the plan right now. Because the driller is concerned that, you know, if we shut down and then wait till tomorrow to do a constant rate test, that we wouldn't be able to get it started again, or if we reduce the flow rate, that we potentially wouldn't be able to get it started again. So what we decided to do, even though we're not going to put a humongous pump in this well, is that we just run this out at 1250 gallons a minute for six hours. And so that's going to, you know, basically fulfill our requirements for doing the, the constant rate test. So we're doing that right now. We should finish up in about, oh, about two and a half hours from now and we'll have that data. We'll start it up again tomorrow for probably about an hour, maybe two hours max. We'll get a sand sample and there's not going to be any sand in it. And then we'll also get our full set of water quality samples that need to go down to analytical labs for, you know, inorganic chemicals and VOCs and synthetic chemicals and, you know, the whole, the whole nine yards. So we'll pull all of that tomorrow and that basically is going to wrap it up. The seal is in as of last week, that setup over the weekend. But in pretty, there's a little bit of delay on getting concrete trucks up there in the middle of winter. But kind of worked through that, so. Yeah, I mean, basically what you guys have, it looks like on this is probably easily a 1300 gallon a minute well. It's designed, you don't need that much water. You need, I think, about 350 per the, the design projections. We were hoping to get 500. We've got a pump spec out that'll do 500 and so that's what we're going to put down there. So you know, in the future, I think you could probably, if for whatever reason somebody came in here and needed more water, I think you could go in there and, you know, maybe upsize the electrical a little bit, put a bigger pump down there. There's enough room to do that. So it's, it's turned out to be a really nice well, so we're extremely pleased with it. Yeah, Darby.
Yes, sir. Do you do any tests with regards to longevity? Like let's say that we did want to run between 1250 and 1500 for whatever reason. Let's say our other wells take a dive. Are there any tests for longevity that you do?
Well, that's, that's kind of what we're doing now. So we've got the pump set at 400 feet down. And so what we do is we, we start it up, we measure the water level continuously as it's being pumped. So we have a sensor down there that does that and basically what's going to happen is the rate of drawdown eventually stabilizes and so that's the period that we're in now. So you can use that data to project that out and say, hey, if we pumped at this rate, you know, we should be able to pump, you know, this amount of time before we hit the pump. We have to shut it off and then let it recover. And then you can kind of extrapolate that to other pumping rates as well. But again, the electrical and everything here is sized at 125 horse, so in a, in a 500 gallon a minute pump. So, you know, that's, that's what we're going to put down there. And realistically, I think it would be tough to get 1500 gallons a minute, you know, just through the distribution system and over to the tank. You know, just based on the, on the size of the piping that's out there. That's basically a fire flow demand. You know, your fire flows about 1500 gallons a minute. So it's something that really isn't ever going to be seen, I don't think. But, I mean, there is capacity there. Like I said, there's definitely capacity there. So it's, you kind of got that in your pocket, I think.
Okay. Thank you.
So this 500 gallons per minute, is that satisfied? What we need to have in line in order to switch out that, the pump station?
Oh yeah, yeah, that's, that is going to be enough, I think on that.
All right.
And you know, there's, there's a little bit of a, if you have a huge pump in there, you're limited to some degree on how much you can turn that down. I mean, if you put a
Right.
thousand gallon a minute pump down the well, you don't want to have that turned down to, you know, 50 gallons a minute or 75 gallons a minute or whatever. It's, it's, it's not ideal for those motors to run a BMD like that. So.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, I guess additional on that, the static water level is about 24 feet down below ground. We did do some onsite tests. We'll, we'll obviously do these at the lab as well, but we did onsite tests for iron and manganese. So the iron level is about .03 to .05, so that's about one tenth of the secondary MCL. So that's similar to what's in your other wells, I believe. Manganese is at .01, so about a fifth of the MCL. And I think that's probably in line with what the other wells are. You can't tell for sure.
Ed, what is, what is MCL?
Sorry, that's the, that's the maximum contaminant level. So that's the, the, basically the drinking water regulation that's set by the, by the EPA. That's the cutoff they have. And again, both of those are aesthetic constituents, so taste, color, that type of thing, just staining, sediments, that sort of thing. But yeah, so both of those, I think, are, are down at the level that they're not, they're not going to be nuisances essentially from, you know, people, you know, complaining about brown water, orange water, anything like that. Temperature is about 60 degrees on it and we'll get pH tomorrow. We had an issue with our probe today and yeah, I mean, it appears pretty clean and free of color. So yeah, we're, we're definitely happy with it. I guess any other questions on this test pumping procedure? Okay. I guess on the rest of the project, we've got the wellhouse plan set submitted back to Gary Carroll at DEQ for final review. So he anticipates reviewing that the first week, first week of February. And as soon as we have approval on that, I think we probably go out to bid on it. I guess are there any, any concerns from anybody on the council on that? We can bring that up to the next meeting.
Let's look at, let's look at that and I'd kind of like to review the timeline at the next meeting if we could, Ed, and just see where we are, see.
Sure, yeah.
We have the impact on things and a lot of those other things. So
Okay.
We can have a little bit more in-depth discussion on that and timeline and what the phases are going to mean.
Yeah, we can do that.
I know we've done this a couple of times, but I just really want to stay, I want the city council to stay up with what's actually happening and what this is costing.
Okay. And I will say that I think the bidding environment is pretty good right now. We have a project out that we're doing with Warren Drake actually up at his HOA and outside of Lake Fork. Just doing a small, like a 35,000 gallon bolted tank replacement and a little bit of, you know, some piping connections and that type of thing. And I was somewhat concerned about getting bids up there actually, just because it's kind of out of the way and it's not a real big project. And, you know, we have five prime bidders on it right now. So, and actually some larger companies out of Boise too. So I think it's, I think it's a good time probably to be putting stuff out there. We're definitely seeing some interest from contractors. So, okay, that's where the wellhouse is at. The booster station, I talked to the engineer on that, the electrical engineer, they're gonna, they should have a set to me by the end of the week. So I'd like to submit that probably into the week to DEQ as well, or if not the end of the week, probably on Monday, you know, first thing next week, get that into Gary to have him review that as well. So I think we're kind of getting down to the point that things are falling into place and, you know, we can kind of start wrapping this up and hopefully get some of these out to bid.
Good. Excellent. Great. Anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you. And we'll look forward to having a little bit more in-depth discussion on the next steps for the wellhouse.
Okay, do you want to do that at the, at the regular council meeting or what are your thoughts on that? Do you want to do a special meeting, kind of like you did the last time or?
No, I'm just trying to decide if I wanted the first one or the second one.
So I got an email back from Jared.
We have audit.
Audit.
The next one? Can we put that on the second meeting of February, please?
So what is that?
22nd, Ed, would be that date. And I don't think we're, it's about holding anything up. It's just about making sure we're all on the same page.
So yeah, honestly, I mean, Gary, I would anticipate Gary might have it approved the week before that. So I mean, I don't think we're
Okay.
we're out like a, it's not a big deal.
Okay. That might be better anyway. So we'll just plan on that in a second. All right.
Okay, yeah.
So much.
Good.
All right.
Okay. Thanks everyone.
Thanks Ed.
Yeah, thanks Darby. See you guys.
All right. So part of your communications that was received was a letter from the Citizens for Community Enhancement saying that they have received enough donations that they do not need the city's funds that were offered to them as end of project funds. So I don't think this needs, this is not an action item. We're just going to sit tight and see what happens and when they get ready to put that in, hopefully they have the donations that we need. But I don't think there's a, we didn't expend funds, we approved them. If we don't use them, then we can use them some other way. But I don't think there's anything that needs to be really action item taken. This was just for your point of reference, so.
It would be great to turn around and issue a press release on that because there were a lot of people concerned that the water bills went up at the same time and it wasn't using the water bills.
Right. Yeah, there was some confusion about where that money would come from. So I just, I'm hesitant to do any kind of a press release until the, everything's in the ground and the project is done. So we can, if everybody's okay with that, we'll just wait till the project's done. And then we can issue a press release. All right, so we have several presentations and I'm going to request that the local business spotlight that we just go ahead and let Darlene, she's been in, in the valley all day with medical appointments and just came straight here. So I'm going to just, she's got about five to 10 minute presentation on vintage, her business that has had some changes. And so I wanted her to come and share those and then we'll go on down and do the, the other presentations as listed there as soon as she's done. So go ahead.
Hey, my business is named Vintage etc. And some of the things we try to take care of in our business is offer people collectibles along with Idaho products, decor, jewelry, clothing, furniture and seasonal holiday. We also have espresso, but we're having to put the electrical and plumbing in. We've got the electrical, waiting on the plumbing and we will go back to having our espresso to offer the community. The new location is in Julie's building. She was gracious enough to rent to us. So we moved from by City Hall down the street into Julie's front building and we love it. It is really nice. So we're very appreciative of her offering us that space. Because we would probably have had to close, which a lot of people were really upset that we might close. So our hours are 10 to 5 Tuesday through Saturday. And I am there sometimes on Sunday and Monday. I tell them that's a maybe, but sometimes I am. You can reach me at Darlene 208-634-6920. And we're also on Facebook. The workers in my business is just my daughter-in-law Stacy and I. She owns the espresso part and we work together. And they've enjoyed the time we've spent there. We've started our fifth year this past November, which is hard to believe, went by so fast. What we love the most about our business, I think, is, and even in a small town, we have people come through all, from all over the world. We have a guest book, because I've always done that. I've always been fascinated by businesses where you go around the world that there's that book and you can look and see all the different people that come through. So I have a guest book and you look through that book and they're from all over the world, come through this small town, which is fascinating. And then some of the other things that really thrill us is when people get excited because they've been looking for something for a long time and find it. And we help them with that.
Derby.
I guess the biggest challenge right now, everything seems to be going good. We've always had a problem with getting locals to come in and see what we have. I've done all kinds of things. I've had drawings at the holidays. This last year, because we were kind of transitional, I give out some coupons. And still, I don't know what you do to get people to come in that just, they're afraid of what you've got, I guess. I don't know what it is. They think things are too expensive. I don't know. But I try to carry items of all price ranges and as a little bit of everything. So it would appeal to them. So I wish there was some way I could get more of the locals to visit. We have some good locals. We have some good patrons that are locals. I guess my biggest problem, if you say it's a problem, any small town usually has a parking issue. That is, that is the problem. And it's more there than it was where we were because there's less available. And as Mac knows, I hate the bump outs. I think they take away parking. I think they kill two of your spaces. And then the other problem with them is that people don't know how to park. Because they're curbs, you can park up and bump a tire right up against them and still pull out, but nobody knows that. They pull four foot back. So you've killed more space. And then especially the one by the post office, I see these elderly people pull up and they'll walk across that bump out in the gravel, nearly tripping over the curves. So I just do not like them. I think it really hurts our parking issue. But that's my opinion.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Darlene? If you haven't been by there, I tell you, it looks really, really nice. Very nice. So, and this is part of what we can do for our local businesses is remind people, like they say, hey, I wonder where I could get, I've, I've found some pretty amazing things down there that I was surprised that they were carrying, so.
And I, I have too, but unfortunately, a lot of our community doesn't have expendable income. And so I, I think it's going to be difficult to get many locals in there. I think if there's anything that, if I could offer you any advice, you know, I, I would think it would be more to attract business from out of town or passersby, whatever that takes. I'm, I'm not a businessman, but like I said, much of our community does not have expendable income, so.
It has, sorry, it has nothing to do with the income? Has nothing to do with income. And we, our, our business is dependent on people going through town. That, that's where it comes from. But I would like for the locals, if I could figure out some way to get them in to see. Because the ones that do come in, they're surprised because we have all price ranges of items. We have gift items. We have all kinds of things. So some of those things that they could get there that has nothing to do with income, I wish we had a fair way to get them there, but I haven't figured it out yet.
Well, we're going to be putting her business in the local, the city's newsletter as part of this, the things that she shared today will go in there and hopefully that will be another way that people will know where you are and what's going on, so.
And you'll also be spotlighted on our website.
That's right, you'll be on our website. So we're trying to do whatever we can to help these local businesses. But thank you so much Darlene.
You're really welcome. I appreciate the opportunity and I don't have to be in business. I'm supposed to be retired, but I love doing it. If there's ways I could reach out to the people and help them, that's why we try to carry as much different variety as we do and price ranges.
Yeah, they have a nice little clothing section right now too, so.
Can I steal your guest book idea for here?
Sure.
I think that is like.
If you come down and look at the guest book, you would be amazed. All over the world, come through this little town.
That's a great idea. That's a great idea.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right. So Chris, are you on?
I am here.
Okay, let me just give a little introduction. I had a, a short conversation with Chris and Andrew Minzer regarding the the broadband access that's kind of coming into our area. And we have talked here as a council about the possibility of actually having broadband as a utility in our community because we know it's, it's something that's definitely needed. So Chris is here to kind of talk to us about possibilities from his point of view and kind of bring us up to speed and what's happening in the region. And so I'll just let you share that with us, Chris.
Okay, good evening council. My name is Chris Curtin. I'm the IT director for the city of McCall. And I was introduced to Julie through, as she said, through Andrew Minzer over at West Central Mountain Economic Development. And they've been a big driver and supporter of a project that we're working on here in McCall that you may have heard of, heard of called Rapid. Effectively what, what, what Rapid is, is it, it developed from a, from a need that we have in rural Idaho and really in rural places all throughout the country, but it's a, it's, it's a challenge to have a good, reliable and inexpensive high-speed internet in, in these more rural communities. If, if you're in town, you might be able to have a choice between two or three providers. If you move out of town, it comes down to one, possibly two, or there are even folks in not too far out of town who can't get any service whatsoever, except for maybe satellite or something like that, but that has its, its challenges. So what we started thinking about was a way to address that that would make it accessible and affordable and fast for the community. The big, big challenges that we have are the providing. the providers that are here try to run their own infrastructure as well as the service of connection to the internet. And if you separate those two things, that is the physical infrastructure, the actual wires and cables that go in the ground from the service of connecting to the internet, you can get some nice economies of scale. And that's what we're doing here in McCall. We think of it as a fiber utility. When I say fiber utility, a lot of people think that is we are, that we are providing internet services. We are not doing that. The analogy that I like to make is the roads that go through town, the city provides the roads that go through town. And people use those roads to, to do their business, to, to, to deliver packages or to drive to a job or whatever. What we're doing with fiber, with a fiber utility is effectively that. We offer, or will, I probably should couch that and say we will offer the fiber utility and the third-party providers, think of your Sparklight or Frontiers, I guess Ziply Now, Stringer, whomever, will offer internet service on on our fiber utility. The reason that that makes sense is, of course, you have one fiber connect, connection that all of the providers are using. So you don't have a, a Ziply going to your house and installing anything. You don't have a Cable One coming to your house and installing anything. I still haven't gotten used to calling them Ziply and Sparklight. So I apologize if I switch back and forth between Frontier and, and Ziply and Sparklight and Cable One. And the big takeaway from that is that the costs are dramatically lower. So in my model, the typical monthly charge, there's, I think of it as, there are three pieces to the puzzle. There's the city's utility, in this case, fiber utility. There is the homeowner's connection from their home to that utility. And then there is the service of internet, of internet. Internet is a, is a service, not a, not a, not a physical product, so, so to speak. In our model, we are projecting that that is approximately $15 for each of those pieces. And that is for gig speed, a thousand by a thousand speed internet. So typically now, the best offering in McCall, and I, I don't know if New Meadows has Sparklight down there. Do you guys have Sparklight availability? So, so Sparklight is 100 by 15 and it costs you $65 or $70 a month. This would be 10 times the speed for $10 to $15 a month cheaper. The reason that I wanted to reach out to, after speaking with Julie and wanted to speak to you as, as the council, is to express the concept to you and also suggest that there may be some more economies of scale with regard to that. So Stringa, as you again may or may not know, is bringing in new provisioning along the power lines from the, the Tamrac Mill into McCall. At that same time, it would make sense perhaps to talk with them with an eye towards New Meadows and how that might help, help you get access to some of those services. The biggest challenges, as, as I, as I stated earlier, are not only that, that being more in control of our own internet access, if you will. It's also, again, the economies of scale. A single fiber, if you go, well, I don't want to get into the, the technical details of, of fiber itself. If you are interested or bored, we can certainly bore you more by going to my website, rapidmacall.com. And you can read all about fiber and how it works and all that fun stuff. But suffice it to say that a, a single fiber or even a pair of fibers could carry all of the data that is generated in the state of Idaho without breaking a sweat. And another interesting feature about fiber is that it's effectively future-proof. Once you put it in the ground, you don't have to change out the fiber, you know, in 10 years or 15 years. You just change out the equipment that's on the either end of the fiber and you can instantaneously have more speeds. And so my, the takeaway, I think, is we in McCall are getting, are getting ready to move forward with the project. We've installed some fiber in the ground. We've got about 11 or 12 miles worth of fiber in the ground, fiber and conduit. So when we install, we install three conduits. But we're only using one of those conduits. The reasoning behind that is, A, it gives you the ability to expand, but B, it also allows you to sell the, or lease the third, a third conduit, so to speak, if someone were interested in doing that. And we have some partnerships with Stringa already that are, that are utilizing that purpose. And then the, the, the best kicker is, and this is where I'm gonna get the most questions from, from the council, I suspect, is that at the end of the project, and our project is approximately, is anticipated to be a 10-year build-out, give or take. That's to hit about 60% of the homes. Now, New Meadows is a little bit more sort of centralized and certainly smaller, so you, you could probably do it a little bit more quickly. But at the end of the project, the net cost to the city is $0. And that's, that's because you, you sell the communication, or the connection, rather, as part of a, a bond. We do it as a, a, a local bond for the individual deployments. So each year, we turn that bond over to the banks. And so what's happening is effectively, you're, you're shifting the cost that your typical homeowner is spending on internet for their home to, to the, to paying, to paying the bond. Because it's, it's, it's faster and, and fewer dollars for them. So it makes sense for both parties.
So Curtis, have you heard of the middle mile project with Northern Idaho trying to connect Southern Idaho?
Yeah, so I, I am familiar with that. That's very exciting, exciting project. That would potentially really have the greatest impact on certainly us here in central, central Idaho. Right now, there is no connectivity from about New Meadows North. I think maybe Reggins, I'm not quite sure where it exactly breaks. And that, that keeps us, yeah, and that keeps us, that keeps us sort of held hostage to the providers out of Boise. If we had that north-south route, we'd be open up to the entire Northwest. It would really be a, a big thing. There's another project along those lines, Cascade, or the county, I guess Valley County is looking at potentially a middle mile that, again, would work sort of along the same lines as what we're talking about with the Rapid project. Where it'd be a community-owned middle mile. If we could get that connectivity into, I'm not sure exactly where the closest meat point is, but maybe Emmett, someplace like that. Internet would almost be free here if, if we had that kind of connectivity, so. It's, it's an exciting project. And I want, I, I have been going out and evangelizing to a lot of the, the communities around Valley County and certainly you, you, you folks down there in New Meadows about it and about the potentials for, for the people that live in our communities.
So were you able, where, where are they coming through? Is it back on power line back here or?
Yeah, they're following the power lines just south of town there.
Okay. Alright. Anybody else have any questions?
I do. So would this work as like an increase in taxes?
So we do it, we do, do it as a, a local improvement. What's the acronym I'm? Yeah, LID, thank you. For each, each rollout. So in our model, for example, we try to do, the, the plan is to do 300 homes in a summer, which is about a rate of about two per day, given a build window of four plus months or so. And we do an LID for that, that release. So at the end, so at the beginning of this, of the, of this, of the year, we spec out some money for that deployment, approximately $3,000 per home. And at the end of the year, we sell it as a bond. So you recoup your money at the end of the 12 months when you sell the LID bond.
Okay, and that, that, that term bond is what's kind of catching me up, because the first thing I think of is like a school bond or school levy, you know.
And maybe I'm using the wrong term. We, we sell the LID to a bank, per se. I'm a computer, I'm a computer nerd, so I'm still learning the financial portion of things.
So Chris, do you have voter approval for this?
We, we don't, we did not need, because it's an LID, we do not need voter approval. It's not a, it's not being installed in every single home. So, and it is, it is an opt-in LID. So we go to, when I say we're gonna do, say, 300 homes, I target 450 to 500 homes. Because I anticipate a take rate of about 60%.
So what happens if that other 40%, that fiber's still running by their home, it's just not tapped in?
Correct. And so the incentive to, to join the, the LID is that we offer financing over a 20-year period for that. Versus if we, if you do not join, then you'd have to pay for your connection fee as a lump sum.
And what would that be roughly, right? I mean, you're talking 10 years out before this may be completed in McCall. So if someone opted to not, not be connected now, what would that lump sum be? Just give me a ballpark number.
It's a, I, I, I estimate that at approximately $3,000 per home. To connect, you're asking me to, what the connection fee is for the home?
Yes.
Is that, is that what I understand? Yeah. And so that gets financed over 20 years or so, and that's the, that's the $15 per month.
Then of course, there is the service also that we're talking about. So we're not saying people would get internet for $15 a month.
No. So the service, the, the connection, the houses, the houses' connection to the utility is approximately $15 per month. It varies a little bit, that's why I say approximately. The internet service would be $15 a month. And then the, the use of the utility, so to speak, the city's utility, would be approximately $15 per month. So your total cost for your internet is $45 per month.
And this is happening in McCall right now?
This is, we are, we are on the cusp of going, going live. If you look at Ammon, Idaho, they're, they've been doing it now for three or four years. And technically, they actually get gig, gig internet speeds for $10 a month, not for the 15, but I'm trying to be conservative in my numbers. It's an exciting product. And it's really a great fit for any smaller and rural communities. I, I don't, it doesn't work super well in a, in a larger city. For example, Boise, it would be difficult. You could do it, it just would be difficult. They have a lot more challenges with regard to what's under the streets and all of those things. But it's a, it's a, it's a great, it's the next, in my opinion, for what it's worth, it's the, it's the next level of internet provisioning for small and medium communities.
Any other questions? Jeff?
Your mic, your microphone's, you're muted, Jeff.
$45 a month, is that for a home and a business? Would businesses or schools pay more?
Businesses would pay more by virtue of the fact that they would probably use more of the bandwidth at, at a given period of time. Schools, probably, it would probably work out the same way with the schools. The schools would probably be, the schools have gigantic demands in the grand scheme of things. Our school uses tons of hosted, hosted applications as well as they're pulling video and doing things like that. So there, that piece of the pie would probably have to, they would probably have a little bit more of a dedicated circuit that we would work out something with, at least a dedicated bandwidth.
It'd still be a lot less expensive though than regular.
Yeah, so at the, at the City of McCall right now, I get a symmetric 200 meg circuit, which is 200 megs down, 200 megs up from a telecom provider, not, that I shall not name. If you can, you can try and guess who it might be. And it costs me 12, 12, 12 to $1,300 a month. The similar circuit on, on Rapid with the school districts getting, buying a gig might cost them a couple hundred dollars, a couple $300 a month. Don't quote me on any of that pricing, but that's, that's our, that's the, that's my anticipation.
Darla, do you have any questions for Chris? Okay. Alright, so.
Julie?
Yes, Darby.
Are you, where are you anticipating the funding coming from, our portion of the installation and you know, getting the wires in the ground? Or am I misreading this?
So the installation, the, the city's installation of the utility is a cost that you would front. I'm, I'm not familiar enough with your, your financials to answer directly how you might pay for that. We paid for ours in piecemeal, which is a, a easy way to, easy enough way to do it. If you, if you identify an area, install the conduit into that area and start selling to those homes, you start generating some revenue. And as you, as you expand to new areas, you could in, in, install your conduit as part of that. We received a grant this year from cares that allowed us to do finish a, a, a portion of that conduit as well as pull in and splice all of the fiber into the, into the network. So grants are obviously a great way to do this. Or doing it, doing it piecemeal would work really well for, for smaller communities as well.
So Darby, this, at this particular time, the grant realm is probably more prolific than it's ever been before. So there's a huge opportunity, especially with what's going on around us. This, if we're gonna do something like this, now is the time to do it because of the demand, because of what's going on in our country. There's just much, much more money out there from what I am, the conversations I'm having, and Chris, I think you would agree, there's money. To get connected.
Yes, and there seems to be a, a, a big, on top of the fact that we've just gone through a, a kind of interesting time here with the, with the pandemic, that there also seems to be a, a major drive by the, even the state and feds to address challenges in the more rural parts of, of certainly the state of Idaho. And again, as I say, the, the country as a whole. It is, it is, as, as Julie just said, it is, the, the, the time is ripe, if, if, at a minimum.
So, is this something that the council is interested in pursuing?
Definitely.
Darby?
Yes, yes ma'am, I am. Again, yeah, we would need a ton of grant funding, you know what the budget looks like and everything else. So we're gonna have to explore that very thoroughly before I would bite off on it.
Sure. And I would ask you to do something other than that. So Darla, what do you think?
I think that it sounds wonderful and it'd be great if we could get something like this to come through here. Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, then I would like, if I, it feels like the council's on, kind of on board. I would like to continue conversation with Chris and see what we can come up with for next steps. And also with Mac funding and that kind of thing. I'm very excited and think we need to jump on this as soon as possible and not drag our feet. And I know it's a big undertaking, but I also know that we're surrounded by this effort. And so we're not the only ones that are working on this. So let's join with the people that are working on this.
Yeah, and if there's anything we can do in McCall to certainly point you in the right direction, I think I mentioned to Julie that the first, the very first step that you need to take is to get a, a resolution together that's, that, that declares broadband as an essential, or internet access, you can, you can work on the fineries of, of the language as an essential service. That's the very first stage. So. That's the very first stage. So, um, not to get too much into the details, but the things that have to happen are, 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 are that. Then, um, the legislature is working on changing the definition of a utility. Right now, the way that the law is codified, um, it, it offers water and sewer and things, you know, the, the things that we think of in, in our minds as more traditional utilities. Um, and, uh, if you, uh, are following a little bit, there was some, there was some movement in the fall about changing it and it, it got, it got, it was poorly worded. So it's, it's being rewritten right now. Uh, to include data transmission networks as, uh, as an, as an, as a utility. Um, but naming, naming that as a, as an essential service is the first step. The legislature is working hopefully towards making that change, which makes things, makes our lives a whole lot simpler.
Right.
Our, our lives as municipalities.
All right. Well, thank you, Chris. And like I said, I'm probably going to reach out to you with just, uh, some requests for a little bit of guidance on moving forward, but we will, this will be back on the agenda for the next meeting. Um, and I might even, uh, reach out to a couple of places to see how to get that, we can get that resolution.
I think I can grab it from.
Do you think you can? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, and then, uh, if you don't, if, if you talk with folks, I, I'll get you some, um, uh, I've got some cards and stuff that I'll drop by, um, when I get a chance here. Um, rapidmacall.com.
Yep.
Uh, we, we call our utility rapid just because I wanted to have a brand to refer to it as opposed to McCall Municipal Fiber Utility, which didn't seem to be really that flowy. Um, but if you go to Rapid McCall, there's tons of information there, uh, about everything, about Ammon, about fiber, about all of the different pieces that we talked about. Um, we tried to answer the questions as well as we, as we could anticipate. Um, and there is a, uh, tab on there that's, that allows you to, uh, drop a pin on the map. It basically asks for your name and your address. And while you are outside of, of McCall, I highly recommend that you still drop your pin on the map. At a minimum, it helps you to see and, and try and get as many folks as you can to do that. It helps you to see what, um, uh, there you go. Oh, thank you very much. Um, and then at the very bottom, you can actually see the map itself that, uh, shows all the pins that are out there. Um, and we use that as a way to, uh, gauge our interest for trying to find the, you're probably a little bit narrow. If you, if you scrolled back out, you'd, you'd see more of McCall.
Uh, yeah.
We use that as our gauge, as a gauge for our map to, uh, uh, going forward, decide where are we going? Where are we going to deploy it next? Right? So if, uh, all the folks in, uh, along Spring Mountain Ranch drop pins along there, then that becomes a, a, a good, you see, you can see some people have already dropped their pins on the map there. And if you scroll all the way out and see, um, McCall, it's, 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 uh, yeah, and it's, it's not just McCall proper. That's, that's down into Cascade and everything too.
Well.
Yeah. So you can see there's a nice cluster there to the southeast of, of McCall where, uh, people are outside the city limits right now.
Awesome.
So we're working on figuring out how it's going to, how it all comes together with regard to, uh, outside the city limits, county and, and things like, things of that nature. So I, I don't have an easy answer for that, but I have ideas. We've got lots of ideas. I've got lots of ideas.
Good.
Awesome.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And I think, uh, I'll try to get ahold of you. Uh, I have just a few questions I want to go over with you.
And okay, anytime. And if you, I, I think Julie, I think you have my, uh, email. I'm, I'm regretfully in my car. If you would share it out to your council, I'm, or any, to anyone, as I said to you before, I'm happy to answer, uh, phone calls or emails, whatever anybody wants to know.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, Chris.
Great. Thank you, Council. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Bye now.
Bye. All right. Exciting stuff. All right. So now we have Dr. Irvine from St. Luke's McCall, who's requested that he come and actually I think he offered to give us kind of an update on the local COVID-19. Thank you for being here.
This is Greg, but I didn't request to come, but I'm happy to come and provide information to anybody that wants it regarding COVID. I'm here tonight primarily to answer questions, um, that you might have about our local circumstances, the vaccine, um, how, what's going on with the pandemic, uh, what local numbers look like and so on. Um, we are in a, uh, or we have been since, uh, early December in a large increase of cases in West Central Idaho. Um, Adams County peaked out, um, it with very high numbers. Uh, I think on December 23rd was Adams County's peak. Um, Adams County numbers are down at the moment. This pandemic behaves very much like a forest fire where there are little spot fires uh, that occur. And then there's a super spreader event, or in the case of a wildfire, it'd be a windstorm or some very dry weather that leads to exponential growth of the virus. And then we see big outbreaks and we've seen that since last March where there's waiting and waxing of viral activity based on what's happening in communities. Um, and, uh, um, at the moment, Adams County's numbers are relatively low, not as low as they were last summer, but relatively low with a 70-day moving average of new cases of 23.3, but you're kind of surrounded by some high activity. Washington County, it is one of the higher, uh, 70-day moving averages in the state at 71.5 today. Um, Valley County is at 56.4, 70-day moving average. And, uh, yeah, as I said, it's very much like, the, this reminds me very much of fire season in Idaho where conditions on the ground lead to, uh, things changing from smoldering embers to huge outbreaks and it can happen very, very quickly, just like a wildfire, because exponential growth, uh, happens very quickly, of course. Um, so, uh, we are, um, vaccinating at, uh, St. Luke's McCall. Uh, we will be opening up soon, uh, to the 65-plus age category of the general population. Uh, yes, in fact, we're waiting for the governor's order tomorrow to allow that to start to happen. That will also be happening at pharmacies, uh, including, uh, Savon at Albertson's and Rite Aid in McCall, um, fairly soon. Uh, and I can answer questions about vaccine, about disease transmission, about, uh, local conditions, whatever you all have. I'm, I'm here to talk to you. Yeah, Jeff?
Is there any way to open up a vaccination clinic in New Meadows, possibly at the, uh, at the doctor's office?
Um, I will look into that. Um, we do have some issues. We're using the Moderna vaccine, which is the vaccine that requires ordinary cold storage. That is an ordinary freezer, like you would keep your elk steaks in. Um, and, uh, uh, so we have, uh, gotten Moderna as they have most rural, rural areas simply because we don't have minus 92, uh, freezers up here. Um, it's a very expensive investment. Um, we, we, we could potentially do some vaccinations down there. I will speak to Amber, our administrator, and see if maybe we could have a vaccine clinic down there, um, periodically, um, as vaccine becomes available. So I'll, I'll let you know about that, Jeff.
Thank you.
Darby?
Um, yes, sir. Thank you for sharing your time with us. I truly do appreciate it. So, you know, and I, I'm gonna ask for your personal opinion, if you, if you'd be willing to give it with regards to, um, whether we're gonna call it immunizations, vaccinations, I don't know. I'm not real savvy on those types of words. Um, I understand what it is. But I, I'm seeing companies drop their clinical trials because what they're finding is their test subjects are not responding. So could you talk to us a little bit about, more specifically about what it is that you guys are choosing to use and maybe possibly what your success rate has been, if you've got a means of measuring that?
Yeah, sure. The only two vaccines that are, have emergency use authorization in the United States are both mRNA vaccines, which is a technology that's been around for 12 years. Um, and has been worked on for a long time. People think that this warp speed thing was kind of out of the blue, but in fact, MRI technology's been researched and, uh, been coming on for quite some time. Um, the, the companies that, uh, use that technology, the mRNA technology, simply said that this was a good use for, um, rapidly creating a vaccine using the genetic code from the SARS-CoV-2, uh, virus, using its genetic code and specifically for a part of the virus, the spike proteins, the things you see on television, little tentacles that come off the virus. Um, they found the code for the spike proteins, um, and were able to, uh, uh, put that code into the mRNA technology, which is what's injected, um, into a vaccine candidate. Uh, that creates little fragments of the spike proteins, not the virus. It's not infectious. It's just the proteins. Your body reacts to those proteins by forming antibodies and that's what makes you immune. With the two vaccines that are approved in the United States right now, which is, uh, Moderna and the Pfizer vaccine, uh, which are very close to identical. There are some subtle differences, but they're very, very similar. Uh, the phase three style, uh, trials that ended in December, uh, where they had vaccinated large numbers of people showed that they're 95% effective uh, at, at preventing, uh, disease transmission. Um, and they were incredibly safe, uh, that there were very, very few, uh, serious side effects to the virus. Um, so, um, that's what's being used. What we have in West Central Idaho is the Moderna formulation, which is a United States company, uh, and, uh, um, have been using that. We have vaccinated now more than 80% of our hospital staff at St. Luke's McCall Medical Center in our clinics and hospital staff and so on. The people who haven't been vaccinated have some contraindication, some reason that, um, they can't have it. I, for example, have not yet been vaccinated. Um, the reason I haven't been vaccinated is that, because I would love to have been, because I'm exposed in the emergency room almost every day, is that we had an outbreak in our operating room at St. Luke's McCall back in mid-December. We had four nurses who were presymptomatic. That means that they were infected and shedding virus, but didn't know that they were sick. Um, and they, I worked with them on a nine-hour day, one day in the operating room, shoulder to shoulder, and we all had PPE on. We were all well protected. But when you're around somebody for long periods of time, even if they're in PPE, there was a significant risk of transmission and I got COVID. I was infected. Uh, I had to quarantine for two weeks. And I also received, and this is something you all should know, I received the monoclonal antibody therapy because I'm old. In fact, I'm older than dirt. Uh, and, uh, uh, and I, they scored me. Uh, my internist, Dr. Barica, scored me as to my risk of hospitalization and found that I had a 21% risk that with COVID that I would end up in the hospital. If you reach a certain threshold with that scoring technique, which is out of the Cleveland Clinic, uh, you are eligible to receive monoclonal antibody, which is the same antibody that President Trump got when he got, uh, when he developed COVID, a COVID infection. Uh, the, uh, name of that is Bamuilinavab, but you don't have to remember that. Uh, and I received Bamuilinavab, uh, uh, right after I was, uh, tested positive and had an extremely mild case. And that's something that people should know is that if people, if a person develops symptoms and they can be mild or they can be severe, if they can be treated early, that is within five days of the onset of symptoms, um, they can receive monoclonal antibody and greatly reduce the risk of hospitalization and greatly reduce the risk of death. And we have plenty of that Bamuilinavab at St. Luke's McCall. We've been giving it to people almost every day, including people from Adams County. Uh, and, uh, it's a treatment. Uh, it has to be given early. It has to be given before you have shortness of breath. It has to be given, uh, uh, in a, in a patient who has a, a risk profile based on age and comorbidities of, of being hospitalized. And we, we score patients when they come to us with, uh, positive COVID tests. And if they score positive and if they want to receive the monoclonal antibodies, uh, they can. So not only do we have the vaccine, we have a treatment as long as it's given under the right circumstances. But I, because I received Bamuilinavab, I can't be, I can't be vaccinated for 90 days. Uh, um, because for some technical reasons, the antibodies that you receive interact badly with the vaccine and make it less effective and also make it more likely that I would have a very strong immune reaction. So I'm having to sit on my keister for 90 days, waiting to get the vaccine. And there are others like me who have weird contraindications to the vaccine, but for the most part, our entire medical staff, nurses, technicians, housekeepers, um, everybody that's in the emergency room and exposed to COVID patients, uh, uh, is getting the vaccine if they're eligible. Um, and they don't have a contraindication. Yes, Darby?
I, I, I hate to keep dragging this on, but both my mother and her husband, who I've not been in contact with contracted it and tested positive. And the reasons that they went to the hospital was the lack of smell and taste.
Yes, very common symptom.
Do you think that's a, do you think that's a good, um, foreteller? I mean, or, or maybe I'll just ask you rather than leading you into an answer. What do you think is, are the better indications that you might have?
Uh, that is the one that is very specific to COVID if you compare it to influenza. Um, influenza is around this time of year and influenza causes a fever. It causes upper respiratory symptoms. It causes a cough. Uh, lots of things that, symptoms of influenza are similar to COVID. They're totally different viruses. But one of the things that's unique about COVID is this loss of sense of taste and smell. Uh, not everybody gets that, but if, if you have that, that's an indicator that you've got COVID rather than influenza, for example. Um, but, uh, um, anybody who develops a fever, a cough, uh, shortness of breath, uh, chest pain, uh, loss of sense, sense of taste or smell, any of those symptoms, either together or individually, uh, and who has a reason to think they might've been exposed to COVID should get tested. And we have plenty of testing capacity for symptomatic people. And that's the way to know you have it. I had very mild symptoms, uh, but I knew I'd been exposed. Um, because the nurses, you know, I, I got sick and I said, gosh, I was with them all day and I've got some, you know, minor symptoms. Maybe I should get tested and I did and I had some positive. So that's the important thing is that if you develop symptoms, get tested. Um, and, uh, um, you know, that's what we highly recommend. Yeah, Jeff?
Oh, I'm still teaching. Our school has a, a really good system worked out. Uh, masks are required in school by everyone. Uh, at the present time, our community does not have a mask mandate. Um, is there anything that we can do to encourage more mask wearing in town?
Yeah, unfortunately, the mat, whole mask issue has become very political. Um, people, there are anti-maskers and there are pro-maskers. Um, the, the most important thing to know is that we have extremely good data now to know that, that you, the use of masks by the symptomatic and the asymptomatic by everybody in public places, uh, works. It reduces that. One of my favorite, um, studies was done actually four or five months ago in Kansas. Kansas developed a statewide mask mandate. Uh, but Kansas is a pretty conservative place like Idaho. And what they said was, their governor said, we're gonna have a mask mandate, but any individual county in Kansas, the state of Kansas that wants to opt out of the mask mandate can. And half a dozen counties in Kansas opted out and said, we don't want a mask mandate. We don't believe in that. We don't, we, we don't want to tell people what to do. Um, some folks from, uh, the University of Kansas did a study, uh, looking at that, saying, gosh, this is a good opportunity to see, is our mask mandates worthwhile? Um, and, uh, when they developed the state mask mandate, their statewide COVID rate dropped, uh, by about 20%. Uh, um, in the counties where, uh, the, uh, mask mandate was continued, um, or was allowed by the county. In the counties that opted out, the COVID rate went up almost 100%. Uh, uh, it, it, there was a. It, it, there was a drastic difference statistically in counties without mask mandates and counties with. So not only do masks work, but we know that mask mandates work, that they encourage people to do that. And the reason that they work is that they, COVID is a respiratory virus. It's spread by respiratory particles of the virus, aerosolized and otherwise. And that the, the mask worked primarily by the fact that asymptomatic people who have masks on are less likely to transmit the virus if they're infected than people who don't have masks on. So it's actually the center of the virus that's protecting the people that are around them. And we, we, there's very, very good science now to show that that's the case. And there's all kinds of misinformation amongst the anti-maskers that doesn't work. And they'll quote all kinds of goofy things, but we've got really good science that, there's just no doubt about it, that it makes a difference. Is it perfect? Absolutely not. It, you know, you can still, I got sick wearing a mask all day long, as did the people around me. But it was because I was in close proximity, in an unventilated, or a relatively unventilated place, an indoor setting, for nine hours and I, I was infected. The other thing that's interesting about masks is that we know that the severity of disease that you get is related to a concept called viral load. And what viral load means is the number of viruses that you inhale are going to define how sick you get. And if you inhale a whole bunch of virus, you're more likely to get more sick. If you inhale a small amount of virus, you may get a very mild case. Or you may have one of these asymptomatic cases where you don't need to develop symptoms at all. And we know that masks reduce viral load. And probably the main reason that I didn't get all that sick, besides the treatment I got, was the fact that I probably had a very small viral load because I, you know, I was wearing masks and everybody around me were wearing masks, we were wearing eye protection, we were in full PPE. So even though I got infected, I had an extremely mild case. And I'm here to talk to you tonight as a result, which is good. So.
So I have a question about the 65 and over vaccinations. Is there, are there contraindications for that age group that would keep them from being able to get that health-wise?
Very few. The, the, there are some. The main contraindication is there are people who have what's called an anaphylactoid personality. And that doesn't have anything to do with them having a, you know, a great personality. It has to do with them being people who tend to be allergic to a lot of things. And people who have had prior anaphylaxis to injectable medications. And what, by anaphylaxis, I don't mean just a rash or anything like that, but I mean a full-blown, a life-threatening, shut your respiratory tract down kind of anaphylactic reaction. People that have had those kinds of reactions in the past to injected medications have a higher risk of developing an anaphylactic reaction to the vaccine. People who have not have extremely low risk of anaphylactic reaction or any kind of allergic reaction. But we've had no significant allergic reactions, for example, in all the vaccines that we've given in McCall thus far, we've had zero. One thing that a lot of people do get from the vaccine is an immune response, which is actually a good thing. It means it's like that old shampoo commercial says, said that the tingle lets you know that it's working. If you get an immune response afterwards, and that immune response is often a mild fever, you feel a little achy, you feel kind of crummy, kind of like if you've ever had a shingles vaccine, for example, the way a shingles vaccine infects a lot of people. That means you're getting a good immune response. And that's not really a side effect, it's actually, it's just a, it's a normal body reaction to pretty much any vaccine. Some people get that to the influenza vaccine, feel a little crummy for a couple of days. I can tell you, I look forward to getting the vaccine. If I am in bed for two days with a fever, I'll be fine with that because it means that, you know, I will develop immunity to COVID. And, you know, that's, that's sort of a normal, we don't even call it a side effect, it's a normal reaction. Not everybody gets it, but some people do and it's, it's not a bad thing. Yeah, Jeff?
Sorry, this is personal. I got my vaccine a week ago.
Yeah.
Did not develop an immune response, I had a sore arm for a day. But how, how long after you get a vaccine does your body start building antibodies?
Takes two weeks after the third, or after the first vaccine, excuse me. You know, it's a two-vaccine series. There's a first vaccine and then for the Moderna vaccine, 28 days later, you get a second vaccine. It takes two weeks after the first vaccine before your body is building antibodies. So you have essentially no protection for two weeks. Then about 14 days after the first vaccine, you have roughly 50% immunity. In other words, pretty good, but not perfect. And then after the second vaccine, within another two weeks after that, you're up to, according to the phase three studies, up to 95% immunity. And you have a very, very low risk of developing COVID. So it takes some time, your body has to build the antibodies.
And what's the, what's the, what's the immunity percentage for a regular flu vaccine?
Right around 50% for seasonal flu. Flu vaccines are not, you know, not nearly as good as the COVID vaccine. 50, 55% in a good year. The problem with influenza is it mutates all the time continuously, as is COVID. But influenza, it mutates very quickly and every year we have a different strain. And the epidemiologists have to make an educated guess about what strain is going to be prevalent in a community. They add, you know, the various strains that they expect to happen, but it's less than perfect for influenza. So the average influenza season create, the vaccine creates about 50%, you're 50% less likely to develop clinical influenza than you would be if you didn't have the vaccine. With COVID, it's 95% and that's well documented.
Cool, thank you.
Darla, did you have any questions? Okay. All right, well, thank you much for your presentation and thank you all for your questions. We appreciate it and we will move on to the next part of our meeting.
Okay, we're available to help you up at the hospital anytime.
Thank you very much.
Testing, vaccination, whatever we can do to help.
All right, thank you for looking into maybe a location here.
Yeah, I will do that and get back to, was it Jeff that asked the question? Do you want me to come reach out to you, Julie, about that?
Please, if you would, thank you.
We'll, we'll look at having it at the clinic down there.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks, Doctor.
Thank you. Great, so the next item on the agenda is the local volunteer spotlight. And I have a volunteer appreciation certificate for Lanaya Hall, thanking her in recognition of volunteer activities in the city of New Meadows. So Lanaya, if you would stop by and pick that up at your convenience, we do appreciate everything that you have done and continue to do in our community. So.
Is she still on the line?
She may be.
I don't think, I don't, I mean, I understand your intent, but I don't think she's going to appreciate it.
Excuse me?
I understand your intent, but I'm not certain that she's going to appreciate it.
Why wouldn't she appreciate it?
I don't know. We'll talk to her.
Because she doesn't like to be in the center of attention.
Oh, I know she doesn't like to be the center of attention, but we, as a council, this is the direction that you wanted to go, is to recognize her, so we're doing that because we want to recognize our volunteers and let them know that we appreciate them, which is the reason that we're doing this. So regardless of whether she is thrilled with it or not, we do want to recognize our volunteers and let them know that, I mean, that's, there's so much of our community that happens because of volunteers, so. Anyway, all right. Dick, thank you for waiting around here for us and for preparing this presentation regarding legal advice. Everybody received their, his little handout and Mac's gonna put it up here for us, so go ahead, Dick.
Well, thank you, everybody, for waiting for this really exciting part of the program tonight. You know, lawyers are very popular people, as you well know. They've been popular for decades, that's, for years, that's why I put up the Shakespeare quote there, which is an example of the popularity of lawyers over time. There are roughly 5,000 lawyers in the state of Idaho. That may seem like a large number to you, it does to me too. That number should go down a little bit when all the baby boomers die off and retire. But we do have a large number of lawyers in this state. I wanted to talk a little bit about what a lawyer is. I mean, we, it's the kind of thing where we all think we know what it is, but I may have a little bit of a different perspective than the members of the council on this. A lawyer is a professional who's licensed to advise and represent others in legal matters. And in this way, a lawyer is a little bit like a realtor. If you think of a realtor as someone who represents persons in real estate transactions, a lawyer represents people in court and also in business transactions. And that's a really fundamental thing about a lawyer's relationship with a client. The lawyer is a representative of the client, the client is the principal and the lawyer is the agent. And so the, the lawyer is supposed to be carrying out what the client wants. And it's very important about relationship. So what's a city attorney? Well, that's provided by statute in Idaho. The city attorney is a legal advisor of the city. It may represent the city in lawsuits and proceedings where the city is involved and perform other duties. There's also a role for a city attorney or contract counsel to prosecute ordinances and infractions. And I did that for two years and now Chris Boyd does that on behalf of the city, does an excellent job. So the whole purpose of my little talk here today was to talk about when you should seek legal advice. I also forgot, I wanted to talk about the role of the city attorney versus what the city council does. And, and this is a big point for me. I provide the city council legal advice, but the city council makes the policy decisions. The city council takes the legal advice, can make of it what it will and then say, legal advice is very good, but we're going to do X or we're going to do Y. That is completely your decision as city council. And I, I may recommend certain things, but it's your decision what to do. So when should you seek the advice of the city attorney? Well, number one, if you're contacted by a lawyer concerning something involving the city, that should be a red flag to you that maybe you want to let Dick know this happened. Because if you're getting contacted by a lawyer concerning a matter involving the city, something's going on, somebody's paying for that lawyer to get involved. And, and you want to have, you want to have that light go on in your head and say, this might be a good time to talk with me because it could get into something a little more serious. If you're asked to give a deposition regarding something involving the city, that's definitely something you should let me know about. If you're asked to provide a declaration or an affidavit with respect to a lawsuit, that's something to, to let me know about that. If somebody says, I'd like you to make a written statement on behalf of the city in a legal matter, that's something I'd like to know about. If you get a subpoena regarding something for the city, just a subpoena, a subpoena to appear, whatever, let me know about that. Let's say somebody says, I'm going to sue the city. If you think that's a serious threat, let me know. If it's by somebody who you don't think it's a serious threat, then I think you're allowed to use your common sense on that. And I've heard people say things like that involving the city of New Meadows before, and I didn't consider it particularly serious with other people, I, I think of it more seriously. And the, the last thing I thought about for when you should seek my advice is if you have a question concerning legal interpretation of a statute or an ordinance. I'm here, you can ask me about that. I'm not looking for extra work, but if these kinds of things happen, that's when you ought to be seeking me out. So does anybody have any questions about this?
So Dick, what happens if you give your legal advice and the city council decides to do something that actually is not legal?
Well, some of the things that I warn about in giving my legal advice may happen. Let's say you do something, I, I've said before that, that what the council was considering doing could be considered unconstitutional. Then some, somebody may challenge that, then we go to court and we try to defend what the city does. That doesn't necessarily mean that the court determines the unconstitutional. But when I give the city that advice, I'm saying you have a pretty high risk that that could happen. But those things have, and sometimes you can make those decisions, nobody will do anything about it and it just goes on and everything's fine.
Right. Okay. Darby, do you have any questions regarding?
Yes, ma'am, the comment that I would like to make is to the rest of our council members. I don't know how many times I've heard people say, if you go through with this, I'm going to sue the city. And the first thing I do is I'm like, oh, this is our city attorney's phone number. And, you know, I drop the conversation, when someone brings up the issue of suing the city, I just drop the issue and give them Dick's number. And Dick, how many times have people ever followed up on that?
Extremely rarely, maybe one.
Exactly. That's, that's my point. Okay.
Jeff, do you have any questions for Dick?
Nope.
Darla? Okay, all right, well, I think this is good information. I do have a lot of people who threaten all kinds of wonderful things, but I, like Darby, I have given out his phone number. But I also, you know, I had somebody recently who said they were going to call the Attorney General. And I told them that is their right, they can, they can go and do whatever they want to do in regards to what we're doing. But this is why we have an attorney, is because we want to know what we can and can't do. And we rely upon his interpretation and I appreciate Dick in that he doesn't just always come back and say, right off, this is what you should do, he said, let me look into that. And I very much appreciate that because I know that he's taken the time to research it and find out completely what should be done. He's not just off the cuff, well, I think you should do this, you know. So I'm very impressed with our legal counsel and, you know, we, we do live in a small town, which is challenging sometimes because people sometimes just say things because they are upset and angry. But I do like the way that Dick handles those situations, it's very good. So, thank you, Dick, I appreciate this presentation and I think it will be helpful for us. I really like bringing out the fact that you represent us and so you need to get, you're getting to know what this council is about so that you can better represent us. And I really like bringing that out, I think that's important to remember, so, good. All right, so real quickly, I, if you will screen share. I worked on the animal control position. I looked at the budget and it looks like the budget for the animal control officer is $4,420 a year. And then I just did a little bit of math here to break this out on how much that would be an hour at $15, $17 or $20 an hour. My suggestion is that we require 10 hours a month of patrol with the rest of whatever it is that we're, the person does, going towards those calls that are outside of regular patrol. And give them 50% of the fines that are collected, which is an incentive to collect fines. Because as you can see, 368 Because as you can see, $368 a month is not a big chunk of change, but it is enough to where a person maybe would want to do something. Some of the questions that have come up in kind of reviewing this is, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is an employee with no benefits, because we have Social Security and Medicare also in the budget. But if they're providing, it seems to me that providing their own vehicle would be part of the job.
Or could be considered contract.
Or exactly. We could do that. So, that would be a question. I think if you have them use the city's vehicle, we have the whole, they're driving a vehicle, drug testing, all of that other stuff. Would we get into that?
No, as long as they're not a DOT driver. Now, if they, yeah, as long as they're not a DOT driver. And Dick, you're gonna have to correct me here in places. So, like, if I use my own vehicle as a dog catcher and I get into a traffic accident while I'm on the clock, is the city liable, or am I liable? That's one of the questions I would think about.
That's one of my questions.
You know, to me, to make it cleaner, it would be, here's a dog truck. Or, we turn around, we pay them an IRS mileage thing with an agreement that they're insured, and they turn it in with us every month.
Which I would think could be good. Would that be, Dick, what is the concern if they do use their own vehicle?
The concern if they use their own vehicle, the city is going to have liability for what its employees do in the course and scope of their employment. And so, if they're using their own vehicle, you have a high burden. And the advantage for having people covered by the city for accidents that they have is the city is protected by the Idaho Tort Claims Act, which limits liability of city employees when they get into accidents and things like that. So, you want that Tort Claims Act protection.
So, what if they were contract? If you just contracted this out and they were not an employee, would it change that?
It could. Contractors of the city, I think there's a strong argument that they would not be protected by the Tort Claims Act. That they would be independent contractors, and they'd be liable in their own right.
All right. So, you know, obviously, if they were contract, we have a little bit of money set aside that we could cover maybe mileage on top of whatever that would be. In the contract, you can't really tell them when they have to show up and when the patrol could happen. Whereas, an employee, you have a lot more supervisory possibilities.
That's the kind of, the portion of it that I was interested in, like, the on-call portion of this. I mean, are we expecting them to get out of bed at 11:30 and go answer a barking call dog? You know, I just, you know, I don't know, or a dog at large. Those are just examples. But, you know, our expectations, I think, 10 hours a month of patrol, the rest would be towards calls. So, what if those calls are coming at 11 o'clock at night? Are we expecting them to get out of that call?
So, that's where I had under schedule, that I think you would have to say, "These are the hours that we're contracting, or these are the times that we're contracting for you four," you know.
Yeah, okay.
10:00 PM or whatever. And then, after that, the Sheriff's Department would have to know that they would be the ones that would be called when the animal control officer was not available. And I would think that it would be good to let them know that schedule.
Absolutely. Yeah.
These calls after 10 o'clock, or, you know, on these days, or whatever. So, I don't, as contract, we can't say you have to show up at 8 o'clock in the morning. But I do think that in contract, you can say, "This is when your contract needs to be carried out, is during these hours." Is that reasonable? I'm thinking from an employment subcontractor.
So, even our auditor has, excuse me, Jared has, in the past, said, "We'll make sure that you're," well, and our insurance guy, "make sure that they have their own work comp if they're a contractor." And the auditor, on the other hand, well, are they actually an employee or are they contractor? Because if they're an employee, then we still have to take out the taxes and stuff like that. And that threshold of less than 20 hours per week in a five-month period would work out to where we would have to pay per se on them.
No, there would be no benefits whatsoever in this. And like I said, the nice thing about employees, you have a little bit more control as far as when, you know, the timing and that kind of thing. But, and then also, I'm wondering if it wouldn't be a good idea to actually create some sort of a document that says, "This is expectation," especially if they're an employee. "This is what you can and can't do." You know, we don't want somebody who's gonna harass people, but at the same time, we also don't want people who are gonna let certain people slide just because they like them, or because, you know, they do them favors, or any number of things. So, I feel like it'd be good for us to come up with a document that says, "This is what we expect from you." I would like to keep it as an employee, just because it's, to me, it's cleaner. And maybe try to find that person. But that being the case, then we probably would have to use the little pickup. Of course, that provides the type of vehicle they would need, because some people maybe wouldn't have a vehicle that you could get a dog into. And then, actually have some training, so that we're not just throwing, I have seen this, where people just kind of get thrown out there. You're now the animal control officer. Well, what do I do? You know, well, this is what you do, this is what you don't do. And I don't think there's anything wrong with saying, "These are the trouble areas that we've had up to this point." These people at this status right now, they've had these many, you know. So, we don't reinvent everything. They've already been cited three times, or they've already got four tickets. So, the next time, guess what? So, otherwise, we just keep going backwards. And then, the follow-through is not there. So, I would like to expand this and actually create an animal control position, job responsibility, best practices, and bring it to the council at the next meeting, and I would love any input that you guys have. Darla, I know you've had your, you've dealt with animal control issues. I would love an email from you that says, "These things are important with the animal control officer, that they know this, that they understand this." If you could do that. Jeff, I know you've had your own run-ins, and Darby, I would like to see those. And let's cover all of our bases, and then find this person and equip them to do the best job they can, and maybe find somebody that's really, that really gets into this and wants to make our town better with the pets and everything else. And we're not looking for a mean person. We're just looking for a person that will follow through and do what's best for the animal and the owner and the city. So, would you guys be up to do that, to kind of shoot me some ideas, please?
Yes.
Okay. I would appreciate it, because I think together, maybe we can come up with something, you know, a semi-retired individual, or retired individual, who kind of likes to get out and, you know, get around town. And I think there's a possibility of maybe finding somebody for this, but we need to let them know what we want, what we need, and how it's gonna look, and what their expectation is. Everybody have talked about this, and said, "Well, what do I do? What is, what are you, how much time are we talking?" And so, like Darby said, "Well, you'd be on call these days between these hours, and you'd have to do this much patrolling." And after that, you have a life. Everybody has a life. The Sheriff's Department would have to be the ones that get those calls. But we can't say that to the Sheriff's Department unless we know what it's gonna be like on our end. So.
I think, if you're asking for my opinion, and I'll give it to you right now, I think the hardest thing is going to be finding a person that is not somehow connected and willing to write that tough ticket or pick that dog up, because they know that person, or, do you understand where I'm coming from?
I guess what I'm gonna say is, that's not exactly the information that I want from you. What I want from you is, what are some things that you think are needed in this person? Whether or not it's gonna be hard to get this person, we'll find out. But what do you think is important? And maybe what you're saying to me is, is it important that they are able to make those tough decisions?
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. Objectivity, you know, I don't care if it's your neighbor, or, yeah. I think we're gonna have a hard time.
I can definitely, yeah, we'll put that in there. Thank you very much. Okay. So, if you guys can work on that, I appreciate it. Just shoot me an email, whatever you come up with. The next item is the ordinance review on parking. And what I want to do is, you all should have received this. There's definite areas in our community where parking is and will continue to be an issue. As Darlene said, downtown is really hard. And what I would like you to do is go through that ordinance, and I'm gonna give you one month to review it, make notes, and come back. And what I really would like to see is some out-of-the-box ideas. And I know this team does this well. Things that we have not talked about before, maybe things that somebody told you, and you're like, "Well, that's kind of an interesting idea." How do we deal with the fact that sometimes when trucks park downtown, you can't see well enough to get out into traffic? Parking is a huge issue. And so, don't just look at the ordinance and go, "Oh, well, I think it looks great." Think about what's happening in our community, and what we need to change, and ways that we could change it that maybe are outside of the box. Share this with people that you come in contact with, you know, what can we do?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Darby.
So, I mean, maybe no truck parking within, because I've heard this many, many times, you know, no truck parking within so many feet of the intersection, because I've heard that many times, especially right there by Brown's, where the old grocery store sits. Albertson's parks their truck there. Maybe it's not Albertson's, some grocery store parks their truck there. And I've received multiple complaints, because people cannot see out of that intersection. So, maybe...
That would be something to put on this, when you're going through this, to make notations and say, "This is something I think we should discuss."
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
And if you got them early, we can include it in the packet.
Right. Actually, I said I'd give you a month. I'm not going to. I'm gonna give you until the week before our meeting. And Angie's gonna send out a reminder two weeks before the meeting. And then, a week before the meeting, she's gonna say, "Please send those to me," and I'll include them in the packet.
Mr. Stubbs, are you still on the line?
Yeah, I'm here.
So, from your legal perspective, can we designate areas that are not allowed for truck parking? Do you know?
Yeah. Well, I don't see a reason why not. I think, I mean, I can look into that if you want, but I don't see anything.
I don't want to, I don't want to tie you up, but...
I mean, you have to provide some parking, but it's reasonable to limit trucks in terms of where they park and that type of thing.
Okay.
Parking meters.
Yeah.
Five places.
The next item is installation of parking signs downtown. So, when the snow gets bad, well, actually, year-round, I don't know if you knew this, according to our parking ordinance, year-round, you are not allowed to park downtown in Virginia Street, the highway there, no one is allowed to park between the hours of 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM. Well, that sometimes does not follow it. And partially, the reason is, because where that notice is, is as you come into town. So, I would like the council to consider putting signs downtown at the park, down in front of my building, which is also a residential building, where sometimes people park and spend the night in their apartment or staying with somebody. Areas that we know is a concern, maybe over in front of the Family Dollar, is also a place where often people will park their trailer for three days. But put it right there by the curb, so people see it. I have a little trouble cracking down on this parking thing when it's out on the edge of town as they come into town, is where they see it, because I don't think they read it. I think they just drive in and go, "Oh, look, I can park here," and, you know, be gone for two days. So, what does the council think about considering putting a few, I'm thinking about four parking signs downtown in specific locations to let people know that 2:00 to 6:00 AM, and this is year-round, so, this is for snow removal, but also for maintenance or anything like that. What do you guys think about that?
I think it's a very good idea, Julie. Yes.
Okay.
I think it's worth a shot. But I made a movement to put a no-parking sign there next to Family Dollar, because people are always backing out of the post office. And if somebody's parked there, then it's a dangerous situation. But I see people park there all the time, right next to Family Dollar, where there's a no-parking sign. Can we try it? Yeah, we should.
Okay.
I believe that we should, but let's try to keep it on the cheap.
Definitely.
Signs are rather inexpensive. It's the installation and all that fun stuff.
Jeff, what do you think?
Fine. I'm still kind of thinking about it.
Okay.
Definitely signs in. It's really important. I hope that people will follow them.
Well, here's what I think. If we put them in, that I think I can put a little bit of pressure on the local deputies and say, "We went to the trouble to put them here. There's no reason when you stop them or cite them that they can give, 'I didn't know.'" So, I think we could help the Sheriff's Department to do their job a little bit better if we would do this. So. All right. Well, I will get a price and information and get that back to you by the next meeting. And I will also give you the locations. All right. The best practices, best management practices, whatever we're calling that, resolution has been changed with the changes that Shiloh gave last time. The only person that wasn't here at that meeting to review this was Darby. Darby, do you have any concerns or anything you want to say concerning this elected official's best practices policy resolution?
I really don't, you know. I mean, it's one of those things that's gonna be an evolving deal. No, no, I don't have anything to add or strike from it. No.
Okay. So, can I get a motion to approve this resolution, please?
Does it need to be read three times?
No.
No, just in a, please, yeah, no, just read the title, and, please.
Matt, can you read that for, I'll make a motion that Mac reads the...
I'll put it on the screen.
Yeah, it's called the elected officials' best practices policy.
Okay. I'm working from paper tonight, so I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Okay. So, I make a motion to approve the elected officials' best practices policies, resolution to be determined 2021.
Okay. Who wants to second that? Darla seconded that.
We gotta hear it, Darla.
Say, say, second.
Second.
Now, we're gonna do a roll call vote. Jeff Parnett?
Yes.
Darla?
Yes.
Darby?
Yes.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you. And we are going to send this to Pam McConnell, who requested this. And this will also be on the website. Mr. Kern is requesting a discount extension for the next home that he is building. He is one of, he's the only one, actually, that has utilized this wonderful discount program that we put together, so that we could get a little bit more housing. And so, basically, we're discounting those water and sewer connections. And you should have seen the letter in here. Basically, he is wanting to get an extension of time to build on his lot and on the 230-feet lorry lot. And I do understand that due to COVID, there has been a lot of delays. So, what does the council think about going ahead and approving an extension of time for Mr. Kern to be qualified for the contractor's discount that we had offered? Are you good with that, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. Darby?
The difficulty that I find in this is the duration of the extension, because we don't know what the outcome's gonna be, you know. I don't, is this gonna run through next summer, too, you know? I don't know. Yes, I am. I'm in favor of, but we might be writing this for a while. But yes, I am in favor of the continuation of the discount.
We can give him an expiration date, if you'd like.
Yeah.
I think that would be...
But we can. The thing is, we can't.
Yes, we can.
Because if, well, we can, but if we're basing our decision on the fact of the virus and whatnot, and we have no determination as to how long that's gonna last. of the virus and whatnot, and we have no determination as to how long that's gonna last, I guess we can review it. We can approve it now with the duration date and then revisit it, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. So what would you like the expiration date to be when we review it again if it's not been done?
See, and that's where I have to throw my hands up in the air. And I usually have a fairly distinct opinion, but I have no control or understanding of when this stuff is gonna
How about October 1st, 2021?
Yeah. Okay.
That gives them a whole other building season.
Yep, I'm fine with that.
Okay, Darla?
Yes, I'm good with that as well, Julie.
Okay, so I just need a motion to extend the time for Mr. Kern to have the discount to October 1, 2021.
On?
On, uh, 2/33.
LaRae.
LaRae.
Okay. I will make a motion to extend the time for Mr. Kern on 2/33 LaRae to October 1 of 2021.
Very good.
Thank you. Second by Jeff Parnett.
Okay, so we'll do a roll call. Jeff Parnett.
Yes.
Darla.
Yes.
And Darby.
Yes.
Okay.
We have a, thank you very much. Thank you all. We have a mobile medical vehicle grant support letter from Adams County Health.
It's for Adams County, but it's the CEDA, Pure Water Economic Development Association. They're, they're writing a grant for the Adams County Health Center to do a mobile clinic.
Which could benefit us.
Which could benefit us, yes.
In the long term, is, does it, everybody okay with that letter?
They wrote it.
Yeah, we have been requesting people to actually write their own support letter, so they cover the bases that they need to if they're getting a grant. And we don't create a letter and then they go, oh, well, we kind of need you to talk to this. So the letter seems fairly understandable that the residents in our community will benefit from the direct services provided by a mobile clinic. I know a lot of people who do use the Adams County Health Center from our community. So do I have a motion to approve the sending this letter of support?
I will make a motion.
Go ahead, Darby.
No, it's your turn, Darla.
I will make a motion that we approve the, um, letter for the mobile medical unit for, um, Adams County.
Okay. Darby, are you seconding that motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Jeff Parnett.
Yes.
Darla Weber.
Yes.
Darby Edwards.
Yes.
Thank you.
Even though that was part of the consent agenda, I wanted it to be separate, because I wanted to have it on the, on the deal.
Yeah.
The next three things are consent agenda items. But before we do that, I would just like to say happy birthday, Darla.
Thank you, Julie.
29? Are you 29 again? Nice.
I hope you have an amazing year this year. Um.
Me too, Julie.
Yeah. So December 2020 financials were in your packet. The January 11th, 2021 city council meeting minutes and the invoices, which I'm going to read to you, they were in there, but there is an addition. So I'm just gonna read them all for the record. Delayed land and financial for the photocopy release, $124.93. Great West Engineering for the Weezer River Trail, this is that grant that was written through the Western amounts of economic development council, $4,350. Mountain Water Works for $7,140.05 for final design of Task 3, construction Task 5. RPR Services Task 7 and additional services on Task 8. We'll review that a little bit more at the next meeting.
So what I was talking about.
Mm-hmm. And then Perkins Mitchell, $598 for city legal matters, Quadian Finance for postage, $199. Safeguard Business Systems for laser checks, $216.04. And United Oil, $387.24 for fuel. And CTC Telecom, $205.97 for telephone or internet.
Telephone, CTC.
Is it telephone?
It's telephone.
Telephone. So there's three items on the consent agenda. December 2020 financials, January 11, 2021 city council meeting minutes and invoices to date that I just read. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I would like to, go ahead, Mr. Parnett.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
All right, Darla seconded.
Jeff Parnett.
Yes.
Darla Weber.
Yes.
Darby Edwards.
Yes.
Thank you.
I know this has been a very long meeting. We just have one more thing to talk about, future meeting topics. The audit presentation will be at the next meeting.
Yeah, I emailed him today on that, so.
Okay, the other two items are forthcoming, but I don't think they've been scheduled yet. Um, I would like to talk about the industrial park and but we may have some potential renters, but I'd like to just get an up-to-date on the industrial park and what's going on there. At the next meeting, would we be able to see that citizen advisory and parks and rec information that they have?
The Parkmaster Plan.
Parkmaster Plan, yes. And then the animal control position job description, I'll have that on there as well. And I will bring more information on the cost and location of the installation of the parking signs downtown. What else? Darby, do you have anything else you want to be placed on the next agenda?
No, no, I don't think that I do right now.
Jeff, do you have anything you'd like to put on the next agenda at this?
Not at this time.
Okay, and Darla?
Not at this time.
Okay, you all know how to go in to the website and post an agenda request, and I've used that several times. Please do that. I put the installation of parking signs on there. I was so proud of myself. Anyway, thank you all for hanging out with a lot of presentations, but a lot of wonderful things happening. I just want to say that. And I, we did get some feedback this, today or yesterday, on the Meadows Valley Minute that goes out every Monday, Meadows Valley Monday, that goes out every Monday. And so we're gonna keep doing that. I hope that you have enjoyed that. And please let people know that those are on the website. And if you have any ideas on it, I'm putting together February's this week. And if something that you want to include, please reach out, let me know. All right, and I am still there. I just wanted to say, I'm getting ready to send out a notice. I, I am still at my same office, but my side, I just have an entrance at the side instead of at the front, we're vintages. So I have not moved out of town. If you heard that rumor, that was not true. So anyway, thank you all. I would like to have one more motion. If someone would like to have a motion to adjourn, please. I will make a motion.
Would like to make. Does this keep happening? Go ahead, Darla.
I would like to make a motion to, uh, adjourn the city council meeting on, uh, Monday, January 25th at, um, 8:29 PM.
Second.
Jeff is seconding that motion.
I'll in favor.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you all so much.
You bet. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, Julie.
Darla, give me a call.